This is our live case study session. This is the case study talking about Alejandro. And this is really an opportunity to just have an open conversation and dialogue and explore these case study sessions of interdisciplinary collaboration and person-centered care. So we have with us today, our guest co-host Emily Lopiccolo. And I'm going to introduce Emily and read her bio. So Emily received her master's in social work from Boston College in 2015 and has been a licensed independent clinical social worker since 2018. She is currently employed as a clinical manager within the Addictions Division at North Suffolk Mental Health Association in Boston, Massachusetts. She supports a dual diagnosis, co-occurring enhanced residential treatment program and outpatient addiction services. She is also embedded in the communities of Chelsea and East Boston where she provides community oversight and outreach to high-risk individuals as part of an interdisciplinary treatment team. Additional special interests of hers include trauma and racial justice. Thank you for being here, Emily.
Thank you so much for having me.
Yeah, and Emily is joining us at the tail end of her workday. She's in the office. It looks like maybe it's a closet, which I think we can all relate to, especially speech therapists. And people might be coming in and out, but that's totally fine. We are going to be talking about Alejandro today, so I'm going to read the case study out loud for anyone who's watching this recorded later. So this is really a case study that looks at the intersection of rehabilitation therapists, so SLP, OT, and PT of social services. So this is the study of Alejandro. Alejandro is a 55-year-old male who was first diagnosed with Parkinson's at the age of 48. He was taken to the emergency room due to a fall in his home that resulted in mild head trauma as well as a broken wrist. A friend hadn't heard from him in a couple of days and found him on the floor. After his acute stay in the hospital, he was taken to a post-acute care facility. While working with a team of speech, occupational, and physical therapists, the therapy team learns that he has no running water at home and that he uses a bucket for a toilet. He has a dog that he has been unable to get outside recently, and so urine and feces has been collecting in the house. Alejandro is also worried about his dog and is wondering if anyone is taking care of him. When asked what he eats at home, it's unclear if he has consistent access to food. He is quite private and is very wary of others entering his home and is not willing to do a home evaluation. And he wants to go home as soon as possible. So just to kind of start off the discussion, I think a lot of times in cases like this, and I don't know if anyone here can talk about the resources that you have at your facility, but I know a lot of facilities don't necessarily have the resources to adequately address the needs in cases like this. There might be a single social worker that's serving dozens or over 100 people on their caseload at one time, and they just don't have the time or resources to kind of navigate something as complex as this. So Emily, what advice do you have for speech, occupational, or physical therapists? If they're working in a facility where they feel like there's maybe not a lot of resources available as far as getting that person help, but they also don't feel comfortable from a safety standpoint, sending this person home?
Yeah, I want to apologize in advance to everyone because I think my internet connection might be a little bit spotty. So if there's kind of a lag or anything, that's probably on my end. So yeah, I think if there's limited resources in terms of social work capacity, I, from the social work perspective, what I would probably do is kind of outsource a little bit. So I always say to people that I think it's important in my field to not necessarily know what every service provides, but I need to know who to ask if I need a certain type of service. So I think just having sort of your community network is really important because I can maybe, you know, consult with someone about the case. And if I can't directly provide a service, I can at least find out the landscape from someone who kind of specializes in whichever, you know, area of need it might be. Megan, I don't know if it's helpful. I could run through like specifics, specific thoughts on which service areas I would reach out to, specific to this case, if you want me to get that detailed. Do you think that would be helpful?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, cool. So for this case, I would say there's obviously many different areas of need. And in terms of like topic, I think one big one, of course, would be like the health and safety perspective. So for that, I would probably call maybe like city inspectional services. And I'm located in Boston, so these may be, some of these may be federal and some may be more specific to my area, but I'm guessing there's, you know, probably wherever you're located, some type of equivalent, at least broadly speaking. So city inspectional services is, would be one of my first steps in this. So if, you know, if he's a renter and he has no running water or a broken toilet, they could come in and provide that. This is a very challenging case because he's not, as you mentioned, he's not open really to having people come into his home. And yeah, so I think there would be definitely a need for, at least to offer therapy, you know, because I don't know whether trauma is a piece for him, but if someone's guarded private, there could be some, who knows, cultural components, you know, to kind of his presentation. So I think just maybe doing an initial assessment, this would probably be my direct role if I were working with this person in this facility, would be to kind of do a little bit of an assessment and see, you know, what his areas of discomfort are around and what he's comfortable sharing with me in terms of what his, yeah, what his concerns are from his perspective about people coming in and kind of doing a little psychoed component around the types of things we might be able to offer him and maybe putting some of his fears at ease, hopefully. And then for the dog piece, I think that could be a good carrot because that's something that he's identified as something that he wants support with. So if we can, you know, support him in that way, possibly he might be open to other types of support. But for that, it could be maybe like researching shelters, doggy daycares, seeing if somewhere could maybe temporarily care for the dog, those types of places sometimes do. And then he could, and then he could return home to Alejandro. Other options could be like local mutual aid network where they could ask for a dog walker, dog caretaker, animal rescue league, may do foster care for pets in situations like this. So I think multiple options for that could exist. The food component, food pantry could be a good way to go. And then also, since he has the Parkinson's diagnosis, the American Parkinson's Disease Association has like some benefits and like, you know, could offer like insurance and that kind of thing. And he could potentially qualify for a PCA, personal care attendant through Mass Health if he did need support with his like ADLs, activities of daily living. So those are just a whole bunch of possible agencies that could be reached out to to support him from a logistical standpoint. And yeah, one of my thoughts initially was something like senior care options or like elder protective services, but he's 55 and I believe the cutoff is 60, so he wouldn't qualify for those things. So that's another tricky kind of component to it. But in the initial, sorry to jump around, but to loop back to the initial assessment that I would do myself before figuring out what to reach out to and what he's willing for, there would be, you know, a mental status exam or, you know, a full assessment around capacity. Because when we think about things like sectioning and, you know, things we, I think appropriately, the bar is really, really high for taking away someone's rights. And when we think about, you know, taking away that choice from someone, there'd be a variety of kind of criteria for, for doing so and threshold. And it would be, you know, an expression of harm to yourself, intent to harm yourself, intent to harm others. And then there's a third kind of more gray area, which is like, you know, someone's judgment is so impaired that they're unable to adequately care for themselves. And I think that he could fall into this category because we think about, yeah, the health and safety component. It sounds like he has unsafe living quarters. I mean, he, you know, did hurt himself physically. And whether or not he is, you know, in need of something like a guardianship or someone to make decisions on his behalf if he's unable to, you know, again, adequately care for himself and keep himself safe. So that would be a very detailed and like thoughtful decision, kind of to figure out what his capacity is. So, sorry, that was very long-winded, but that's what I got off the bat.
I was just going to say, Jill, did you have a question? You can unmute yourself. Jill, can you find the microphone because it's pretty muffled?
Let me try this.
Is this bad?
Yeah, there we go.
I hear better with a speaker, but nobody hears well when I have it on and I forgot. Okay, so I was saying that was, that was a great overview. Some of those things I'm familiar with. I did home care for quite a while, some things I didn't. But one thing I would say is if you're working in a setting as a permanent employee that sees adults, you know, whether it's geriatrics or someone, you know, start building a toolkit for yourself, meaning a, I'm old school, but like a three-ring binder. And you could have resources for food because every area is going to be different. And if it's state resources, it's going to be different state to state. And even town to town, I live in the Ann Arbor, Michigan area, and we have everything here. I mean, I don't think there's anything we don't have as far as the resources. But other parts of the state, like even the Upper Peninsula, they have some things, but not like we do down here. So know, get to know what you have and start keeping, so you know where to refer to and you know where the food pantries are in shelters and doggy stuff. Because I'm telling you, doggy would be my concern. But I mean, we as a humane society, maybe they could help. So I was just saying, you know, if you may not need that resources on a consistent basis because he's, he's probably an outlier versus someone you see on a regular basis. But that was just my two cents about wherever you are, if you change settings, start building resources and, and treatment guides for where you are, it'll, it'll really help you. So that's it.
Thanks, Jill. Yeah, and I agree. I think it's all about relationships and building relationships and finding those key people in your community. And like, I used to live in New Zealand where they have an incredible amount of social support and all kinds of networks in place. There would be a ton of resources. And now I live in Montana where it's very rural. There's not a lot of infrastructure in place. There are bits and pieces, but a lot of them rely on grant funding that runs out. And so things are changing all the time, too. And so one thing that I was really fascinated by when I first talked with Emily is this hub model, because I think it speaks to this idea of building relationships and it actually puts like an official framework around it and it allows communities to build those relationships in a very meaningful and structured way. So Emily, can you kind of give us a broad introduction of what the hub model is?
Sure. And quickly, I'll just add to Jill's point about the kind of developing library of resources. I feel like that is such an important point. And there's a few websites, I can't think of them offhand, but, oh, Help Steps is one that is basically that, where you can search by area and resource type. And it's really, they keep it pretty up to date, which is really helpful. So, you know, it's kind of like a nice way to have it, just like that's, that's a resource that has a bunch of other resources linked to it as well. And I think they, they do keep it pretty, you know, they're adding new things pretty often, so. I think it's called Help Steps. Yeah. And there's another one for substance use specific services that I use a lot called Helpline-Online. And that one's great, too. It's formatted in the same way and there's a number as well. So, you know, you can say, I'm looking for a detox and, you know, within a five-mile radius of this zip code and, you know, it, whatever your search criteria is, there's this insurance, you know, you're looking for women's only or whatever. So yeah, but in terms of the hub, I'm so excited to talk about the hub because this is something that I've been involved with for, I think, like about five years. And it's a model that we stole from Canada. And I don't know how many of them are across the country, but we have a few in Boston. The first one we started here is in Chelsea, which is a, which is a city next to Boston. And then we have a few in some of the neighborhoods of Boston as well. And I've, I sat on the East Boston hub to start, and then now I'm on the Chelsea hub. So what it is, is it's kind of a community response. As Megan said, it's kind of putting a formal structure around being like a silo buster between different agencies and different disciplines. So basically, it's police-led, which is kind of interesting. So it's, it's community police. So they don't really deal with enforcement in their roles. They're very much community police officers. So they will go through, and there's one assigned to the Chelsea hub. He goes through and he looks at the different cases that came through there. I don't think it's called cases, but I'm not a police officer. The different, you know, situations that they intervened with and see if there's risk factors that have to do with resource needs, such as mental health, overdose. It could be any types of, it could actually, this could be a hub situation, the one presented here. Any kind of, you know, need where there's a community provider who could help support it, immigration, anything. And they kind of flag that case. And again, it's not their job to know. They, they really just have a familiarity with what are some of the general things that someone might need support with from a social services standpoint. They have that familiarity because of their relationships with the providers at the table. So they bring it forward if they think that it could probably meet criteria and they present a very, it's once a week, the meeting, they present a very, like a snapshot, de-identified, you know, age ranges and risk factors of a case. They say whether it's an individual or a family, they just keep it really general. And then if the table decides, the hub table decides collectively that it meets kind of, you know, meets criteria for a hub case, which includes it has to cross multiple service sectors. So, you know, you can't just need mental health, you know, a therapist, because then you would just talk to that provider directly. You have to need different mental health, different types of services, crossing several service sectors and cross multiple risk factors. So if collectively it's decided that it meets the threshold, you can move forward with that case. And so people who sit at the table, providers include myself, so like mental health slash substance use, housing, Department of Children and Families, probation, immigration, the schools, the hospitals, like, you know, it could be, I think we have 20 or 30 active members on the Chelsea one. And so what will then happen is once it's decided that we're going to move forward with it, then people will raise their hands and agencies will, they say which agency should be involved, the hub chair. And for instance, I might raise my hand and say, I can offer, you know, we can offer an intake for a community support program worker, so kind of like a case manager. And someone else might say, oh, well, we can, you know, offer Section 8 for housing or, or whatever. And so once you've established which providers are going to be, going to be involved in that case, everyone else leaves the room and then you move on to the next filter of the discussion, which is a little bit more detailed. So it's where you provide name, date of birth, all that. And the way that it kind of gets around HIPAA is because you've determined the person is at a risk level such that if we don't intervene right now, something bad is reasonably going to happen. So it's called, there's all these, this lingo, but it's called acute elevated risk is considered the threshold. So again, if, if we don't intervene today, you know, the person or the community or whatever could be put at significant risk and something bad is going to happen. So that's why we're able to, they're able to share that information. And then, so yeah, so they will go to the filter for, and then kind of right then and there, right after the meeting, we will plan our response. So, you know, we'll say, all right, we're going to go do a door knock and offer these services to this person. You know, we'll kind of talk through what we want to offer and what we think is indicated. And then we'll go out together as a team. Usually it's like two or three of us, sometimes more. And we will go to the house, knock on the door and say, hey, you know, we're, explain a little bit about where we're, you know, coming from and what the hub is, just very briefly, and then offer them services. And we've kind of built a pretty good relationship within the community where people are kind of aware of us, so they might self-present to the hub sometimes, they might refer family members. And so, yeah, it's a pretty, I think we help maybe, you know, I would say an average of three to four cases every week for, for years, you know? So it's really helpful. And then one of the biggest parts, speaking of the relationship building about it, that's sort of an intangible benefit is, or kind of incalculable, too, is the relationships that I've built with other people at the table where I know who to ask if I need, like, you know, someone from this certain hospital. If I just have a quick question about like, hey, you know, what's, when are your intakes or whatever, it's so much quicker to just shoot my connect a text. Or like, do you guys have anyone who specializes in this or anything? And they just know because they work there. It just is such a time saver to have that direct connection. They have that kind of, you have that loyalty to each other. So you have, you know, a greater kind of incentive to respond and to really, you know, go the extra little distance for them that you might not otherwise. So yeah, I think it really is about those connections. And so that's what I got on the hub for you.
That's so cool. I just, I love it because it breaks down the silos, it brings people together literally at the same table. And I, I don't know if you, like, how much you can answer these questions, but I'm just super curious, like, if anyone's listening to this and they're like, well, why don't we use the hub model in my community? Like, who, is it the, is it the police officers that started? Is it, like, can anyone start it? Is there funding available for it? Or do all of the individual institutions and facilities kind of decide that they're going to, like, it's part of the salary of the people that they've hired? Can you talk about how to get started and how it's funded?
Sure. So as far as I know, there isn't separate funding allocated for it. So it is sort of like, you have to kind of carve it out of your day. I think the way most agencies make a case for it, or at least this is how I kind of justify it, is it actually ends up saving you so much time in the long run and you're so much more productive from attending this one hour a week meeting because of the way we're doing things. So yeah, the funding piece is definitely, and I could be wrong on that, but I, as far as I know, there isn't separate funding and it would just be your agency kind of allowing for it and creating space for it. And in terms of how to get started with it, so we attended a, we attended a hub training. And I can get you that information about like who put it on. But it was, it was, you know, whoever came up with this model has a formal training and then they train, they train staff and then some staff become trainers as well. So they'll go around and start up different hubs in different neighborhoods within the city. Oh, with the funding component as well. So I think there's some creativity that can be had there. I'm just remembering this for myself. So I'm part of kind of an overlapping service called the Trauma Team, and there is a grant for that. So this, I was kind of able to loop this in. So I think people can probably get creative sometimes in that way of like fitting it into something broader. And the Trauma Team, you know, it's a similar intersecting service, so that a lot of the, a lot of the staff are similar and a lot of the agencies are similar. It operates much in the same way. Did I answer all your questions? I can't remember.
Thank you. Okay, cool. So if anyone's interested, it would be a matter of finding out when this next training is going to be. Do you, does the team ever meet online or does everybody meet in person during these weekly meetings?
So before COVID, we all met in person. And then since COVID, now I would say there's like, I don't know, maybe on average, five to 10 people in the room. And I think there's, more people have joined since. So like, we used to have, I would say about 30 members, 30 active members, and it kind of, you know, some weeks people come, some weeks they don't. But it, it really has caught on because everyone kind of sees and feels its value. But I would say, I'm not very good at estimating numbers, but we probably are up to like 40 or 50 these days. I think just the, yeah, it's huge. It really, I think, having the online component, while challenging, I don't know if you guys have attended meetings where some people are in person and some are online, there can be some technical difficulties sometimes, but it really has increased accessibility. It just, you know, cuts down on travel time and just more people. It makes it a lot easier for people to attend. So yeah, that's been kind of a, kind of a nice feature of it. And I am going to look up kind of the hub, how to get started with the hub, because they, they came to us for a training. So I don't know if you can just kind of, it's the type of thing, I don't even want to like guess at it, but the type of thing where you can call up and schedule something and set it up. But I get the sense it's that, that type of thing. So.
Awesome. And I had a question for you about adult protective services that you kind of already answered. So if you feel like there's nothing to add to that, just let me know. Or if other people have questions about APS. And I don't know, I think I asked that question because that was always kind of the go-to in the facility where I worked is like, oh, like, well, APS is going to have to get involved. And I always remember thinking like, that seems really mysterious. Like, what do they do? What is their role? It felt kind of punitive, even though I don't think I even now fully understand what the role of adult protective services is. Or like, do they, are they run by cities? Are they run by states? Like, I know nothing. So if you could enlighten us about adult protective services, that would be great.
I, I won't say I'm any kind of expert on this. It's more like, yeah, so I think it's, it's state level. Those on the call, please correct me if I'm wrong. And that it has to do with, it kind of goes hand in hand with like reporting, like mandated reporting is my understanding. So cases where there is neglect, abuse, that type of thing, I believe is where they would get involved. And I think it has to do with that, kind of like the sectioning conversation from earlier around, you know, making the determination that someone needs that level of care and support. I do think that, and this is just sort of like my opinion on, on it, that some of these entities do have a lot of power and like, you know, Department of Children and Families, I think is another example where there's, you know, institutional challenges, shall we say? And, you know, that is something that is, I think, as a social worker in this role, is, I think as a social worker in this role, uh, almost like because of that power, um, it's something that I think about almost like when I'm communicating with a probation officer. Different goals, of course, um, but I think about, uh, you know, let's say I'm, I'm writing a letter to a DCF worker, a probation officer, giving an update on a treat, on how a client is doing. Um, I will kind of, I almost see it as like an art of like how to share the information. Um, how much, how little, the way to, you know, present it. And I, I think of it as like, the client is over one shoulder and the DCF worker is over the other shoulder. And I was, either one of them going to be like, oh, sorry. D, sorry, Department of Children and Families. Um, just an example of a, uh, institution that, you know, when people, when they step in and kind of take over like that, I think about, you know, um, am I advocating for the client? And am I balancing that with being ethical, you know, in my reporting to them? So, um, sorry, that was kind of a roundabout answer to the question, but I, I do think it's, you know, it has to do with like investigation and assessment of, you know, things like safety and abuse and all that. And yeah, I think there's definitely challenges there, but also, you know, we can understand too, like the need and why that entity exists. So yeah, there, there's so much, so much to say there. I do agree with you, but I think it can feel kind of mysterious and it'd be kind of scary too. So, um, yeah, I think it's just like a careful, careful navigation and an awareness around that. And just being very intentional with like the way you share the information and, and how you, you know, just trying to be as trauma informed as possible through that process.
Jill, did you have another thought or questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, I have called APS a few times. There's times that, um, my supervisor wanted me to call APS and I refused. But I will say they are not entirely punitive. My first, my first day doing home care ever, we went to this lady's house. She was probably in her eighties, um, laying on the couch, couldn't even get up, laying in her filth. And her son who was taking care of her was mentally disabled. Now he had done a great job up to a certain point where she declined. APS was called to help them. And many times APS, um, will go in and recognize where services are needed and get that involved. And the other thing that's different between APS and CPS, if you are nervous about calling them, once the case is finished, it, they delete it where CPS is there forever. So it can be punitive, but it also can be very helpful for your client. And I agree, I would approach it with only the information needed. But if they show up at the house, they may find that they're hoarding, that they're living in filth. People can live alone and no one's abusing them and APS is called. It's not always about abuse. It's about, is this person safe whether by themselves or with somebody else? So sometimes if you feel like a caregiver is abusive, yes, you would call and let them, you know, sort out the details and might get law enforcement involved. But so many times it's not that. It's just, they need more help and it looks bad to outsiders, us coming in and we see that they're, they're not thriving. So that's my two cents on APS.
Yeah, thank you. And Nicole, did you, do you want to say your comment out loud? Cause it's a really good one.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, let, let me know if I'm too loud. Um, I had just typed in to the chat box that, um, I work in a skilled nursing facility and I feel like in a scenario like this, depending on their ambulation status, if they can't confirm the amount of care needed at home, they tend to get stuck long-term care. So we have a lot of patients, I feel like, that get stuck long-term care. Or if they can't afford assisted living facility or at-home nurses, they get stuck long-term care. And I said it kind of after listening to Emily, it makes me want to kind of look up some maybe different things we might have in my area that could help patients not get stuck. Cause it's, it's kind of sad to know that, like, maybe there are other options than just long-term care at these young ages.
Yeah. And I think we, we can, especially in facilities where there are limited social service resources, like we can be such an advocate. And there's, it's not that we're playing the role of a social worker, but we are making those other services and those connections more visible within the facility. And Emily, can you talk at all about like any ideas or suggestions for building those relationships within the community? If there's not something as amazing as a hub model going on? Um, like where can people kind of start to reach out? Are there any, any methods that you have found helpful? I'm trying to think too, like, it often, it seems like it just comes up with different cases. You meet different people and then it's just about staying in contact. But it's almost like there needs to be like a, a interdisciplinary community happy hour or something where everybody could get to know each other.
So true. I think, yeah, the hub is my response to everything. It's really funny. I, um, started doing a grant in, with the Revere Police Department and it's like kind of a similar role that I have over with Chelsea, but there's no hub. And I just keep pushing the hub. Like this is what we need, guys. It's what you're describing, the need is. Um, but yeah, I think just, um, over the years, I'm trying to think what I, I did before this. And I think it definitely involved, uh, networking. And as you said, like, as you follow the trails, you might learn, you know, just having broader conversations, um, as time allows, obviously, even within, um, your day and working with certain, uh, clients, just kind of gathering more information, writing down contacts and, uh, you know, um, information, just asking that one or two extra questions about what their agency does. Just to kind of almost have a network of, like a service, um, treatment network in mind in addition to the specific players, um, can be helpful just for yourself, like almost, um, functioning as your own hub in a way, like you're the hub, um, can be helpful. Um, I think, yeah, just, just having these conversations, um, and doing some of the research. Uh, I think some of the big hospitals can sometimes be good in the sense because everyone is kind of in-house in a way, like, I'm just thinking about in the Boston area. It's like, uh, Massachusetts General Hospital and, um, you know, uh, Brigham and Women's and all that, um, are some of our big ones here. Uh, and those hospital networks have generally, they're really resourced for the most part. Um, and they have just different departments. They have a whole, you know, uh, domestic violence, uh, department. They have the social work department, but it's specialized. Um, I'm thinking about even like Dana Farber. The, uh, like our big cancer hospital here, um, they have, uh, support groups, um, like therapeutic support groups for so many different types of cancer, like broken down. Um, so just learning about, if you go to like one specific agency in your area like that, you might find a whole bunch right within, um, one space. Uh, so that's kind of an easier way to get connected with a bunch of different things and that can kind of be a go-to for you. Also to know who the main person is. So like, I know there's this woman, um, you know, those people in your town or city who know everyone? Trying to find out who those people are because they not only know their service, but they know every other person. Um, so yeah, these are kind of, I think, just like, uh, kind of informal, non-structural ways to go about it, just as an individual, um, that I've kind of tried to do and it's worked pretty well. Um, but yeah, I love the idea of a community happy hour kind of thing, like really just see, yeah, just, just start having conversations and building connections, like kind of on a bottom-up kind of way. Yeah.
And I think if we're all doing like what Jill was saying, I mean, I didn't do it as organized as Jill. Like I had sticky notes everywhere, all over the office, different people. But I think that like passing on that information to new people who are coming in and being the one to connect everybody, like becoming that central person is also can be really powerful. Um, but one thing that I really want to talk about before we run out of time is this idea of where is the line between the requirement to step in to help somebody? And the human need to respect people's privacy and their own wishes. So like in the case of Alejandro, like maybe he really, really wants to live this way. And there, you could argue potentially like, yes, it's not very clean. And maybe there's some situations that need to be resolved, like the dog. But overall, like he's been getting, maybe he's been getting along for a long time, the way that things have been going. And he really just doesn't want help. Like how do we, how do we live in a system where we are here to help and serve? But then also within that system have a culture where we respect individual wishes?
Did you want me to answer or do you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Any thoughts you have?
Yeah, if anyone wants to jump in, go for it. Um, yeah, I think, um, this is one of the ultimate challenges, right? It's one of those things where it's so, such an individualized decision. I think, uh, really having like, um, almost like panels or committees or something, or like risk review meetings to make these decisions is so important. Um, so you can make the most thoughtful and zoomed-in decision possible with enough information and just really, because it's such a, a weighty, um, decision, uh, it's kind of like, you just, you just want to be as, as thoughtful as possible about it. Um, so I always think about like, when we, when we make the call, um, about sectioning, for example, the section 12, um, there's different types, but, uh, is like the mental health section that often like providers will do. Um, and when we talk about the need for a section, some of the questions I like to think about are, um, what is the specific thing that you are concerned about happening, right? What is the specific, not just like, oh, that sounds risky or seems unsafe, but like what could really happen, right? And when is it going to happen? Is risk imminent? Because if it's the kind of thing where, yeah, maybe over time it could develop, they could develop like a, you know, um, some sort of, uh, I don't know what, like medical, um, diagnosis, you know, after like, as sort of like a long-term trauma situation exposure, um, that in my mind is not, you know, doesn't meet the threshold. I think it has to be pretty imminent and it has to be specific to safe, safety or health or something that, um, really necessitates, again, just something that is going to happen if we don't, this person cannot keep themselves or others safe for some reason, right? So I would want to do further exploration, um, in this case to figure out what the best move was. For example, we'd want to look at like, um, cognitive capacity or, uh, you know, like, um, yeah, any mentor, uh, interference of mental health, um, symptoms or substance use disorder, or, you know, just any neurological, like any markers you can look at to see this person's, um, kind of functionality and stability and all that, and, and their decision-making, um, from that standpoint. And, you know, uh, right, of course, any expression around intent, um, for harm or thoughts, or, you know, just your usual safety, um, planning kind of stuff. Um, and then also just really thinking about the whole spectrum of offers. So for example, um, if he fell, um, you know, is there a way to, uh, set up his space better so that he, it could be safer and that he could still, you know, be independent there? Um, but, you know, it, this is a really tricky one because, again, I think I would, I would start by having a conversation with him to kind of see, um, the dual purpose of assessment of capacity, but also like what his specific concerns are, are around the, um, kind of private and the wariness, right? What have his experiences with systems been like in the past? It may be, we can't, we don't even know, right? We don't ever want to make assumptions. So, um, figuring out if there's a way and kind of, uh, some motivational stuff around that. And then if there really isn't, and, you know, something, you know, safety-wise is, is like really reasonably going to happen again. I mean, it's a, even lack of information is information, right? So the fact that if, if we're unable to know exactly what his environment looks like, if we just have limited information, that alone is a risk. So like, you know, given everything. Um, and I think that that's a really complicated decision and I think a lot of different perspectives around what the concerns are, um, are kind of required for making a decision like that, different disciplines. Um, I wouldn't want to make it in a vacuum. Um, and also from a liability standpoint, I wouldn't want to be, have one provider be responsible for having, you know, to make that decision. Um, I think, yeah, so those, those are kind of some of the, I think considerations. I think it's just, I don't know, that's what my field feels like sometimes is just a whole bunch of what are the considerations with a decision like that. Um, so, but yeah, I think it's always like ways to be as person-centered as possible to, um, figure, get, figure out how to preserve like dignity and, um, things like that. Uh, and go as far as you can first with other measures before jumping into that is really important.
Great, thank you. Do you have any thoughts? As far as, as like from a counseling perspective, because I feel like social workers get more training and counseling than we do, which is zero training for most of us. Um, one thing I see often, and I've done this too, is we get into these conversations and, and speech and occupational and physical therapists are often the people that are spending the most time with this person, like in a case like Alejandro, where they end up in a medical facility. They're spending up to, you know, several hours with them every week. And so there's this rapport, there's this relationship, there's, there tends to be a deeper, more complicated understanding of what's going on in their lives just because of the sheer volume of time they're spending together. And so then I see this happen where the therapist will start a conversation with the best intentions to direct the conversation towards like, we, you know, coming up with a solution to the immediate safety problems. And so that conversation might look like, well, Alejandro, if you go home, there's a high chance that you could fall again. And then the patient's response generally tends to be denial and frustration. They don't feel seen, they feel very defensive, and then it, it kind of just unravels from there. And the harder that a rehab therapist pushes to get somebody to understand their perspective, the more that patient is pushing back. And then you just kind of end up in this situation where it's a battle for who's going to win versus a battle about what the actual safety concern is. So with all of that, do you have any thoughts or ideas or advice for therapists who are wanting to engage in these conversations? Who feel like, you know, they're the, maybe the only one that truly understands what's going on and they really are spending the time with the person? They have that rapport and they feel like they want to get into this conversation. Um, how can we start those conversations in a way where people, um, aren't going to feel as defensive? And we're not going to get that push and pull and back and forth?
Um, I love that question, by the way. Um, and I think I just want to acknowledge too, uh, the challenge around the goals of, um, you know, uh, what you're trying to achieve with them are different than therapeutic goals. Where our whole deal is exploration and feelings and open questions and all that. And that's not always, there isn't like always time for that. And it's not, you know, it's maybe not your scope and like, so all that. So, um, I say this with that, just to say that I'm aware of that context. Um, but some of the things, just if I were coming in, you know, trying But some of the things, just if I were coming in, you know, trying to have that conversation and, and kind of guide in the direction of being motivational around it. You know, again, my whole, like, um, field is about spending a lot of time listening rather than informing, cause that's like a goal of the, you know, of what I'm trying to do. Therapeutic goal is to spend a lot of time listening rather than, rather than informing and educating. There's a little bit, it's a little lighter on that and more on like, yeah, the open-ended questions thing. Staying curious, I think is a great tactic. Um, and that often feels, uh, genuinely non-judgmental to people if you're just really trying to understand it. People wanna feel, as you said, heard, seen, understood and trying to avoid, we make so many assumptions all the time. Like even something simple like someone saying, you know, someone in their family just passed away. Um, and just jumping to say, like, this would be in a therapy session sense, like, oh, I'm so sorry to hear that. I'm assuming that that's, I'm assuming a lot, right? Including that that's not like an, that could have been a really complicated. You could have had, you could have a lot of complicated feelings about that person dying based on the nature of the relationship you had with them, you know, so. Even something so ingrained as that, we're making these assumptions all the time, um, trying to stay zoomed out as much as possible. And I think too, like when it comes to being effective, uh, in, you know, your goal here of trying to like, get through your concern around the safety piece and, and all that, is just keeping in mind that like, I think trauma is at the heart of so much of what we see is like trauma responses and, I think we're just learning more and more about that. And also the fact that with trauma work, it is almost all about the relationship. So the rapport is just essential. It's the relationship itself that's healing. So i- it's more than half of what's effective about trauma therapy is the relationship itself. So I think just, uh, trying to maintain that rapport and, and those are some of the things that I think can really help with it. And just, um, also, people can feel, I think all of us can, when you're not seeing your patients as people. Right? And like, I think that it's, you know, just keeping in mind that like, it's just, you're sitting across the table from someone who, there's a very, it's a spectrum, right? It's not like us patient, like well, unwell, like it's, it's a whole spectrum, right? So, um, just kind of having that perspective as well, like, uh, can, people can feel it. I don't know how else to say it, that they can, you know, that you're not gonna judge them is huge and that you're compassionate and that you're, you're really there to listen and create that like safety, because if they feel emotionally safe, they're more likely to be able to really think it through, which is what you need to be able to do. And then again, you're asking the right questions. There is very specific tactics around guiding someone in the direction. Offering choice where you can is a huge, and just being kind of casual about it has worked really well for me. You know, just being like, well, you know, here's what I'm thinking and hear me out, you know, like, you could do this or this, um, but here's some things you might wanna consider when it comes to this. You know, someone's gonna respond to that way better than like, you need to do this. Right? They're gonna kind of clamp up. That's just how we, that's how we're built. The fight or flight thing kicks in really quickly and when it does, your cognitive centers shut down and your emotional centers shut down and your adrenaline starts coursing through your body. So you're not taking in digesting information. You're not even hearing it or processing it. You're just having a trauma reaction to it, so. And there's such a, it's such a careful balance there. So anyways, those are some, some thoughts on that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I always come back to, like, our role is not to look at the situation and assess it and come up with a solution. Although that's often, like, that's kind of the training model and that's the water we're all swimming in right now with the traditional medical model. But our job is actually to assess the situation, provide education, provide options and support choices. And it's just such a different mindset. And it can be hard in a facility where there is a very authoritative model where people, like healthcare is above the patient, making decisions for them. That exists in a lot of places, so, you know, it's very challenging. We have one minute left and I have one more question for you about waving a magical wand. I did just wanna give everybody who's here live one more chance to ask any questions or contribute any comments. Thanks for being here. All right, Emily, if you could wave a magical wand and change anything about how our system works, what would it be?
Oh, that's a casual question. Oh my God, I would really need to think about that. Anything about our system? I don't know, I'm kind of a, a burn-it-down kind of guy. I think there's a lot of institutional problems. And I think that, uh, really like, I, I think I would just say like, um, generally landscape-wise, diverting, uh, funds into social services, I think would change the whole game, you know? And I think funding too, because I think it's kind of short-sighted to think that it's not worth, it's not even from a financial standpoint, I think it's a win-win to put money into social services because in the long run, it's, it even saves money, right? It keeps people out of the hospital, it keeps people out of prisons and, you know, like if you really, yeah, I think if you were to put those things upstream, upstream support, like, I guess that would be my one, my one item would be to provide that upstream so that, you can prevent, you know, yeah, bad things from happening.
Absolutely. I one thousand percent agree. I'm on a journey. I've been a vegetarian for twenty years and I'm trying to get a hundred percent plant-based and I was listening to this podcast about cheese, cause I'm having a real hard time giving up cheese. And they were talking about the government subsidies that go into funding commercials that sell products with cheese. So like the government pays for Burger King ads and like the new Hardee's, like double bacon cheddar melt or whatever, or whatever brand that was, Arby's. And McDonald's ads and it's like, why, like, why are we using government funding to pay for commercials for food industries that are pretty much destroying our bodies? When we could be putting that funding into so many other causes, including the fabric of our social services within our culture would be my personal preference, if everybody could just make that happen. But Emily, thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate your time.
Thank you. This was so great.
And thanks, everybody, for coming and you'll get a copy of the recorded version in your email. Have a good night.